It is 7:30. I will now call the East Lime Zoning Commission regular meeting of April 7th, 2022 to order. It is 7:30 PM. Let's rise for the pleasure of the ladies.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, two hundred and fifty-five, for what we stand as one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Myself, Terrance Allen is here. Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Granitek.
Present.
Debbie Jett Harris is not here. Mr. Peck.
Yep.
Ms. Thurlo.
Here.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Here.
Ms. Markovitz is not here. Mr. Schmidt is here. I did take the liberty of sitting Mr. Ginsburg prior to the meeting in place of Debbie Jett, just for the record. Mr. Mulholland is here, and Sue Spang is here. Thank you. No, Ms. Hardy. Public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, moving on. Moving out to the public hearings, which basically outdoor dinings, we will open up items one through 12 together, which are the application of Eugene Mini for Black Point Pizza for a renewal of outdoor dining, application of Edward Martone for a special permit for a renewal of outdoor dining, Lebanese pack, Black Point Pizza is 44 Black Point, application of Scott O'Reilly, owner of East Lime Cafe LLC, VBA Smoky O'Grady's, for renewal of outdoor dining, 306 Flanders Road, application of five churches by the bay for a renewal of special permit for outdoor dining, property identified as 215 Main Street. This is a new business, just for the record, same property, different business, application of Harry and Terephinis Longenitis, DBA Family Pizza, for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining, 233 Main Street, application of Leo Roach for Strive LLC, 247-2 Main Street, outdoor dining, application of Teddy Ignat Ties for Main Street Grill, for renewal of special permit, 252, excuse me, Main Street, application of La La Rona for renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining, 267 to 283 Main Street, AKA 13 Hope Street, application of Steve Turner for Lillian's for renewal of outdoor dining, 374 Main Street, application of Costas Anastasio for Niantic Dyna for renewal of special permit, 26 West Main Street, outdoor dining, application of, pardon my, Ned Ogus for Niantic Pizza, for renewal for special outdoor dining, 53 West Main Street, application of Steve Carpenter for Niantic Bay Inn, AKA Lime Tower, for renewal, special outdoor dining, 229 West Main Street. Those are the first 12 we have here. Mr. Mulholland, we don't have any items with any of these said applicants doing?
The issues with them, I haven't had any complaints, and these are all renewals. These are applications that you can approve, no major change, and they're just looking for their annual reimprovements, so they can operate spring on this, because they're getting ready to, they're looking for their extensions.
I move we approve applications one through 12 for outdoor dining for 2022.
Second approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Ms. Thurlo, all those in favor, say aye.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Number 13 and 14, these are not renewals, correct?
We only did one through 12.
I am, yeah, right now we're just one through 12. Mr. Peck, I'm going to open up 13 and 14 separately.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so close the public hearing on those. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye against? Abstain? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to public hearing, agenda number 13, which is the application of Janet Vellin for Rosa Negro LLC, for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at 214 Flanders Road.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will know that, so they have a small dining area without alcohol. They would now, like, they have alcohol, and that's why I need this, or they need this special permit, even though they're not here. If you look in the back of your package on their application, which is four pages from the back of the package, on the, it was Rosa Negro LLC, on the back of the sheet is their layout. It's very small, because they don't have a lot. I mean, they're only going to get three tables and a little bench with kind of, um, a couple of extra seats. They'll be a fence, they're going to build a, just a stone structure out there, they're going to back and put out and put a small bench, and then they're going to put a, a, a line of fence around it, which will have two entrances, next to an entrance into the building, which will come in through the gate, and it will be charged a fee, and it will be open during hours when the restaurant's open, and they're not, they're not late operation, and I don't even think they're open for lunch. I think they're planning it, and they may be late for the long way. So, this is somewhat of an anopious application in more of a formality.
So, Mr. Mulholland, is it, is this like an outdoor bar, or is that the bench?
No, that would be a bench where you would sit, where you might get a couple of people, and in front you'll see some smaller tables with, like, a little seat, like a stool on the other side, and, so they all serve in that little area. It's not large, but it provides an ambiance for their clients if somebody wants to be outside.
So, then this right here is just bench area?
Yeah.
And there's individual tables along with three, four tops? I'm sure judging by the way that they've done the rest of the property, that this would be...
They've done pretty much, I think I mentioned, the other night I had dinner there on the street, depressed.
Gotcha.
Although I was part of the 430 early group special crowd at the stadium.
Any other comments? Anybody? Jay, you good?
Yep.
So, I would take a motion to close that public hearing for Rosa Negro LLC, outdoor dining.
So moved.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thurlo. All those in favor closing the public hearing for Rosa Negro? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries to close, la, la, la. Public hearing of the application of Candace Devon, Devonitis, for Devs on Main, for renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at 255 Main Street, Niantic. Mr. Mulholland?
So, if this is a renewal, and you may recall, some of the men, some of the men out there, last August, typical drugs, we...
August 5th.
Commission approved her outdoor dining. She came here presentation. The structures used in some of her restaurants were brought over from the, some places that she had in her New London operation, to get in and save money and get moving and try to get open, because she had already lost the wish of the summer. So, in our discussions with her, and my discussions with her, as you know, I do a lot of architecture stuff around town, and I was not thrilled with what she was doing. However, with that said, in order to get her open on her presentation before the commission, she passed that, we approved what she was proposing on sort of a temporary basis. We had talked Broad Island, Broad Island railing, maybe concrete with a, maybe a stone cover on it, or something. We hadn't fleshed that out yet, and we were hoping for her to get to that this spring. I went over to the restaurant today to talk to her about that. She was not there. She subsequently contacted Jennifer, my admin, Anne, because I had asked her to, if she couldn't get me, and they had a discussion, and I, I got an email later in the day, and I will just read that to make sure we flesh out the record. Janet sent her an email saying there's some question about outdoor dining, because it was supposed to be temporary, yada, yada. She responded, "I was out shopping for the restaurant, heard Bill stopped by Devs." I left him a voicemail message. "I did not plan on attending the meeting tonight. I didn't realize I needed to. No changes have been made to our deck from last year. Hopefully that information was just, if you found a line, you can clean my outdoor seating. Let me know what you would go need from me. I'm happy to help." In addition, we've got a subsequent email. "We definitely want to do something more permanent, however, I know you did a severe contract. Did you any planning last year? We do plan on wanting to get someone by midsummer. Can you give us plans, ideas to set up for our permanent patio next year? Hope this is successful." Yikes. Candace. So, there you have it. So, she's looking for renewal of what she has until she can redesign, et cetera. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have the ability to set a milestone for her within the year prior to the next renewal?
Uh, you, she's looking for the annual renewal. I think I called, if I pull the book and take a look, I think it's a one-year, you know?
It is, because of alcohol.
Yeah, I think it's because it's a one-year permit, but she could, if she follows through with, I believe she will, she could come back, she has something by, I would say September, and ask to modify then, so she could stop work on changing it, if we get to that stage. But anything we prove tonight, I believe, would be for the cycle till this time next year, but I believe it'd be helpful to improve her patio. She's got the restaurant somewhat under control, and it's operating. It appears to be a pretty good asset.
But again, it's, we're not going to prevent her from upgrading it this year if she chooses to.
Right. So, she was to get organized by July, and I will encourage her, because it's the right thing to do, and I would do it anyway. Obviously, there's a cost associated with it, but if they pull everything up, and we have to put in the concrete patio, we got to dig, we got to jack, we got to jump out of there and redo it, and, which technically none of my business costs to doing business. So, that's kind of the different pathways forward, and, or we could ask her to come in in a couple of weeks and have a discussion with us, or we could renew it, and say, and I could go over and say, "Hey, you need to come in, and you need to get us a new design, because we're not happy it'd be temporary and not going to end up being permanent. So, you run the risk of not getting it approved next year. Heads up, let's get it done, let's all work together." That's kind of what we're...
Yeah, at the minimum, it should be on record that it's not something we intend to make permanent.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and, and, as you know, I do a lot of architecture stuff. I don't believe it's the most beautiful design, most appropriate design for the restaurant, but not, not everybody's going to see it the way so much of all of us see.
Correct, and just for the record, just so you know, last year, when she was temporarily approved, I think she should have to come back to you with a permanent design, because of the fact that she's talked about, you know, blueberry bushes and such.
Yeah.
And trees and stuff like that.
Well, she said this would be temporary, what she got.
Correct.
She did say that.
Yeah.
She did, and, and...
And just for the record, the commission is not against her having outdoor dining.
No.
Oh, no, no, we know that.
Just to get that on the record.
And, you know, we've been very pointed about reviewing everybody. The first thing you see, if you know, downtown's got a lot of outdoor dining, we're very fortunate, and we put some very special rules, which, hey, folks, if you're a restaurant, this is a bonus for you. It's a gift from the town and the commission. Please respect it. What we ask in return is a decent design, and that you pay attention to that. We love that you're here, but join us in trying to improve downtown, improve the character of downtown, and this is part of doing business. She did in fact say it's temporary. None of us are a fan of, what is that, extra 111?
T111, yes, sir.
And, and, and I think that goes without saying, collectively, we all have that.
And then there, there may be some issues that go beyond zoning into the building department's purview in regards to a floating structure and a temporary structure. There's some state safety issues and permanency issues and, you know?
Yeah, and I will share, how do I say this? Our last building inspector has moved on, and one of the assistants has taken over temporarily while we advertise with someone, and this man is in my office 45 minutes a day or vice versa, because we're helping him out and, and trying to make sure we get up to speed and catch up, and he's very open to discussion and being helpful to everyone, so it's nice to see. So, we have exchanges about these kinds of things.
Correct.
And the good thing is, we're all right there, including Les Light, who has to look at the patio for their, of, and so few reasons too.
Mr. Mulholland, would you like to touch on the extension of the state's granting of the...
Yeah, I will. FYI for everybody, the state, the governor has extended the patio exemption that was put on under COVID, so such places as, um, Lilianos, can continue their outdoor dining, which is not the most effective either, but it's exempted. And then, remember Charlie's had some outdoor dining in front, we could do that again, and there was one other...
Holocaust.
Yes, that can continue as well for another year. It was extended, so you'll, when you see that, that is why they have what they have, because it's been exempted again. Should we just leave them that sit, and then some of them may come in for more permanent another time? Some of the problems are, like, Lilianos is obese, he doesn't want to put money into the property. I can understand that, but outdoor dining may help him. The governor's things have him, and so do you, Charlie, except it has the same thing. So...
Yeah, just for the record, Charlie's outdoor dining permit is for when he does the deck in the back. He's been doing it for many years.
And he's just trying to keep the permit alive for such time as it continues.
Just so that you know.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, these people have had a tough time all, for the last year. Even if the government, governor says, "Let's start over, go and go back to the regular time," I think we ought to extend this year until the end of this coming summer, minimum.
I think that's what it, yeah, that's what it is, yeah.
Well, the governor can say, "Hey, go back to, you know, it's okay now."
Right. I, I think what it is, is he, he extended it for another year.
2020.
That's what I want to do.
Yeah.
So, it's extended to the next year, about this time of year.
I didn't think it went that far.
Yeah, it went, it's a whole year from now.
Okay.
So, you'll see it all over the state.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing for Devs on Main?
So moved.
Do I have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Mr. Granitek?
Any questions? Can you clarify for me? So, I didn't really take any public hearings at all at once. So, the first time, the first public hearing, there wasn't really a motion to close that public hearing, but there was a motion to approve.
That, I was going to mention that. What happened is, she mentioned it to me, she thought that we were approving them as the minute, excuse me, as renewals, when it should have been the public hearing. I was actually going to bring that up.
Okay. So, so how do you want to deal with that?
Let's change to close the public hearing, one through 12. Okay, so the public hearings should have been one through 12, then 13, and then 14. I apologize, it's all messed up.
I just want to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to move into the regular meetings, which should be pretty simple, in all honesty. I think, Anne, now, you may go for applications one through 12, which I can just, should I read the names? Just the names or...
I think you can, you ought to give you a review of the event of the public hearing here in the maintenance, Sham Islands.
You have them all written down there, Ms. Sue Spang?
I will have them down.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve renewals for applications one through 12?
Yes, I move that we approve applications one through 12 for outdoor dining.
Thank you, Ms. Thurlo.
My second.
Mr. Dwyer.
I think I did, one through two.
Yep. Mr. Dwyer, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, six, zero, zero. How about approval of application number 13 of Rosa Negro for outdoor dining? Motion to approve.
I move that we approve the application for Rosa Negro for outdoor dining.
Do I have a second?
2022.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, six, zero, zero. Do I have a motion to approve application number 14 of Candace Devonitis for Devs on Main for outdoor dining?
I move that we approve the application for Devs on Main for outdoor dining for 2022.
Do we have to have that as temporary?
I don't think so. I will be talking to her, because I kind of look at it the way I think everybody looks at it, which was what we were led to believe. We want to see the results. It's time, we're sympathetic, but it's getting, so I'll be down there probably a bit.
Okay, my apologies.
And I'll design it a day more.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, six, zero, zero. Yeah, just mention it to her, Mr. Mulholland, please. And you're going to publish these and...
Uh, publish next Thursday. I think it's on Friday for the record.
Okay.
See, even though she couldn't do her patio this year, she may be able to go ahead and do the trees. That would be nice.
Well, those are the kind of things we'll talk to her about.
That's all on there.
Um, you know, it's going to be easy, so, but she's, I don't know that she can, she's got to pull out that deck, and you've got to see how much area we're going to have for, and how much air, how, you're going to build a patio, you're going to make it permanent, you're going to try and get as much area as you can, and then the zoning guys are going to come along and try to get as much new space as you can, so it's always a, you know, kind of a discussion, and it goes, and we kind of arrive at, maybe through that machine.
Yeah, I was thinking, there's that flat area with just mud on the left side of the door, not where the patio is.
Yeah, yeah, well, if you look on the east and on the west side of the long building, that's all landscape. We did that once, and, and, you know, trying to soften everything, you know, one last piece is in that.
I'm sure they'll work it out. Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes of March 17th, 2022. I was just looking for in there, Sue, in there when I was mentioning with Ms. Hardy about the Fairhaven Bridge, it was more so about the bridge railing than the bridge itself. I don't know, did you just indicate that in there somewhere?
Sure, you just want to put, because it's on the Fairhaven Bridge railing?
Yes. Yeah, please. Other than that, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I move we approve the minutes as amended.
For March 17th, 2022.
For March 17th, 2022.
Thank you, Anne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Against? Motion carries. Old business, there is none new business. The application of Wayne Frazier for Niantic Bay Nutrition.
Back in town, huh?
Maybe only during the summers, right? For a special permit to operate a juice bar, takeout only, no food, at 81 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut. Mr. Mulholland, you schedule that?
Yeah, I will, very briefly, do the special permit, because when you read the definition of fast food, it includes...
Juice.
Drinks, juice.
Yes. We're not California. Still food.
So, I think it's for the granddaughter. We should get there when we get there, and so we're scheduled to have a 21st, I passed something else I was going for, so we have...
The 21st is going to be a busy night, just for the record.
Be busy enough, and we'll get a member here.
Yeah, you should all wear ties.
Wow, at least.
Yep. Okay. You schedule that, got that?
Good, thank you.
Any business on the floor, if any, by the majority of the commission? Anybody? Mr. Dwyer? Mr. Ginsburg?
Left hand, no.
No? We're good?
Yeah.
Anne, you going away again somewhere?
I'm here for a while.
You're here for a while. You guys all set?
Yeah.
Perfect. Seeing none, moving on. Mr. Mulholland?
Um, it's a slow spring. It's a very slow spring for the zoning commission. We're normally pretty busy this year, it's probably due to COVID, maybe the interest rates. There are some projects out in the wings. Who knows if they'll show up in my office with plans and even follow. I got a couple potential on Paulson Post Road. There's a very large one that's in the wings. It's a water and sewer deal before they ever think about blocking the rust, and it could be a year before they show up. Other than that, pretty quiet Rocky Neck Village is just about done. We're still battling about CEOs and completing. Pretty nasty. I've got the lawyers involved. Um, new building on Main Street's moving along. They should be putting up steel, and they're going to...
Cranes up.
Supposed to be there today, and these guys are, I, I don't, I don't think it matters if it's poor, and they hit their schedule. So, that's moving along. Pretty much it. I've got a restaurant going into the Morton House. He's pretty slow getting, moving. He thinks he's going to be open for Memorial Day, yet he's got no kitchen, and I can't let him open unless he's a restaurant. We don't allow bars if we get our opening, so we allow restaurants. What else is cooking? Um, pretty much that's it. It's a quiet spring, but you never know if they're going to work, walk through the door on Monday morning with applications. And remember, Landmark is out there, and they were going to reapply, so we'll see if that's a come forward.
Have you heard anything from the state on the potential demolition of the mobile station in the, uh...
Yes, I have. The project manager has left, and been hired by the design group. Although, this man has been replaced. I had an introduction through this man to the new guy, the younger guy, his turn, and we had a long conversation. One of the things I asked was, so the reason I called him in is I've got word that they want to take the trees down, put a stop and shut in there, demo of the bridge, and they're reworking of the area around 874. So, I was like, you know, touching on trees.
I was going to say trees.
Those are my trees.
Yeah, always worry about the blight when you come off the highway.
Yeah, well, we're getting to that. So, I talked to him, and he's going to revisit it, because they wanted to put up with snowshelks, and to, the name sidewalk in Utah. No one's going to follow it anyway.
Sidewalk?
Down here, suffer 95, snow's going in three or four days. So, he's looking at reworking that. We discussed, well, we're going to take the buildings down, he dates around July 1. That's the schedule. He pulled it up, it wasn't necessarily his schedule, it's something he inherited. So, that's what he's telling me, and then actual construction next spring. And I thought it was a two-year project. He thinks it's a three-year project. So, I have another way to go. And, so, they're getting ready to move forward. The breeze apartments, I got them to do dry, stack, scold, look on the apartments instead of the, the finished concrete. I deem up a little bit, I said, "You do it, you do it carefully. What's wrong with us?"
Yeah.
And they finally acquiesced. They're putting in a large commuter lot on the south side, southwest side of the bridge. I proposed it from day one. I don't think it's necessary. It's way too large, and, and, you know, so the knockbowl would come down, and you're right there, and, you know, historically, in my opinion, they are used to other things than commuter lots, and being so close to the casinos, et cetera. I didn't think we needed it, and I preferred to see it on the north side, which would be a little more quiet. They don't want to hear it. I lost that vow. And I don't know that the front office was that involved to be supportive of that. I did, there was some effort, and I'm still hopeful in miracles. And then, um...
There's parking on the north side for the DOT garage, isn't there? That, not, it's not designated.
That's the east side. On the southeast side, when they redo the exit entrance again, when the road come, you come off of 95, going west, and you make that loop, that's going to move way out, and the road is actually the driveway, and the exit will be right by the lumberyard.
True value.
True value. It'll come in, and it'll curve, and then it'll tie in with the Costco. That opens up some acreage in there. Perfect spot. Years ago, when this first started, I had asked that they give that to the police station, and at that time, they had said yes, and of course, several things have happened since then. But that's an ideal spot for the commuter lot, kind of outside out of mind, but more localized, in my view, because when you're getting off Northbound, you're usually looking for a pit stop, you're on the way to casinos, you're on the way to Kid Maine, so on and so forth, so you're more transient. Now, we're going to be down on one gas station, because they'll take down the gas station, they'll take down the, the old motel, and we're trying to get it down, because it's dark, and it's just not, you know, it's a safe place. And then, you know, across the street, we got kids working in the coffee shop, which is a little nicer. Now, we do have a lot of police presence, because state police and local police eat at Lilianos, so we have a little bit extra help there, but still, you don't know.
Why you got to bring food into it?
Because I'm eating, daddy, and I'm doing, and a lot of hours.
When he's done, I like to say... When he's done, I like say, if he ever is done.
Well, we can come out. Mr. Mahalan? Mr. Dwyer has a question.
Uh, one complaint. Do we, the lights up by King Arthur Drive, what, you come off the highway to go left, to Costco's, to go left, you got a green light coming down King Arthur Drive and, and the, uh, the motels, you got a right, both at the same time. And I was there a couple times and there were almost a couple accidents.
Yeah, that's going to change...
That's the state, yeah.
It's not being redesigned with, with, with the bridge project. So then you've got to change. Right now, the DOT signed off on that and they're comfortable and their engineers say it works.
Okay. Mr. Mahalan, have you, um, thought about the CA at all? Seeing that we're not so busy?
The CA?
CA, the adoption, you know, of the CB regs into...
Yeah, I've, 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 I've four pages written and I found there was more to do than I thought because when I look at the CB design stuff, um, in changing it, I had to take and move some stuff around. So I'm probably halfway there. So I worked on that and then Gary and I are kind of poking at the LI question. So, you know, so making some progress because it is slow and gives us enough, but the office is not slower.
That's, well, I, yeah, I know.
I'll just share, um, yesterday, day before, five hours, I signed up 109 permits.
It's a good thing.
Well, I needed to get them done, get them out so we don't hold up building. And they start to pile up if you're not paying attention. And it's, you know, the nickel diamond stuff still needs to be looked at. I'm going to call nickel diamond, clear the outlook, it's not big enough in the picture or pocket, whether it's a storm door, an addition or a new kitchen. You know, and you've got contractors lined up and you get a slot from them and they're only available here. And if so, we hold, I could lose that slot. So you have to be mindful of that at times. So, you know, we're moving along pretty good at the staff while we're getting all our stuff done. It's been pretty good, especially when you're building that.
And they move... What's the LI question?
Um, we, we've had asked that we look at, uh, adding more light industrial in, um, and so we're looking at some of those areas up, um, to society, society, yeah, further up on society, on the south side of near the highway.